Hello, everybody. This is the Wilmington Board of Education. We're having a special meeting this evening. It is Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. It is six oh two P M. That we are calling this meeting to order. Several months ago, we got in contact with Q A and M Architecture and asked them to please take a look at our two school buildings. And put together a facilities needs assessment, which has been done for us, and we're excited to find out more. We have Rusty Malik and Michael Lane here this evening to help present.
So we've been back and forth. This is kind of round one. And I think our last conversation, my eyes about popped out of my head. So this is really round one for you as well. And the intent of tonight really is to be have a high level overview. Give you a picture of, I think, the work that's been done and you correct everything, anything that you want that I'm saying here. And then the work that really talking about phasing and like what's first. I think was probably the most powerful conversation that Rusty and I have had. Where it went from, we're looking at one item to, well, if you do that, you need to do this, 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 this. And it was like the list just kept growing and do it at the same time. So I think that's the point of tonight is not to go through every document in detail. This is your first look at it. Is to give you a sense of the work that's been done so far. Where the numbers are at and then talk about what you want for next steps and moving forward. And additional phases, just what do you want to do with it next? If that makes sense. Does that make sense to you? So I'm, they have a presentation that I will share. Maybe it's my first day doing this. There we go. So I'll leave it to you guys. So anyone else you want to say to introduce?
Good evening. I'm Rusty Malik and this is Mike Lane. I'm the principal in the firm of Chris and Barry R. Carey Malik, and this is what we do. So we worked with you on the new school renovation approach way back when. So excited to look at these buildings again. We had a pretty good idea about all previously from our evaluating back then. And learn a lot about our school as well. So our process, just to give you a quick overview. You know, the way we started this process is one, we have, we received a lot of information about other studies that have been done. So, and you certainly studied both the schools quite a bit. So there's a lot of data there. We took that data just as a base. Has kind of condition to say, okay, here is where we're starting. We know that these issues have been identified. And as we move forward, we need to see what's been taken care of, if anything. And, and what we can, what needs to be augmented or what have some of these conditions changed since they were last reported? And in particular, the report that we will reference, I'm referencing is the one done in two thousand seventeen by prior associates. And I think they updated it a little bit in two thousand thirteen. But that was a very in-depth report. So we weren't going to spend a lot of time and generate more data that I was going to just repeat that information. So what we try to focus on is what else do we need to do and understand what the scope this project needs to be. It's off, you know, as we had our initial discussion, the goal, as I understood it, is really more to see how through whether there are capital improvement projects or projects that are done and that are smaller projects done over multiple years. That these buildings are looked at so that you can accomplish something in terms of improving the building itself. And what is going to take to do that work? We have not, you know, looked at the educational viability of these buildings. I mean, obviously, they're functioning as schools. And so, you know, we're just looking at the conditions assessment in terms of what these buildings are like. What are the implications of the, not just the physical conditions, but things like codes as they impact. And every year, every three years is a new code. So how is that over the years impacting these buildings that, you know, date back to nineteen twenty-two and in the case of hall? So those are some significant issues that we have to consider as we go through this process. So, so we've gone through the data evaluation. We came out to the sidewalk, the schools, our engineers, everybody came here. And, you know, we've had some discussions with Phil as well. And probably we'll have one more, another meeting just to confirm some of the conditions. You know, the report, as you see it, they might be, as we're going through it, sometimes we'll realize that some, some work that was identified as work that needs to be done may already have been taken care of in some fashion. So we want to always check ourselves. This is the first draft of this, the report that we developed. So, you know, so that's, that's where we are in terms of the process itself. One of the challenges here was, once we have identified all the deficiencies. Then, you know, how do you move forward to the next step? How do you prioritize? And so we took that first step in terms of what we would prioritize. And just so that you understand, this is certainly something that can be debated and even your priorities. This is your facility, so you could establish the priorities to some degree. And I say some degree because some items are driven by code and you have to, have to address them. So as we looked at the issues here, and that's how the report is also developed. We looked at it in terms of number one, you know, what's the, what are the existing conditions? Let's say the building envelope. So that's, that's item, you know, one of the items that you'll see. And I'll, I'm clear. So we start with the site and the site is, again, all the, everything outside the building as we look at it. Here, the next slide. So the site is the grounds, the walkways, everything, once you exit the building, utilities. Things we look at are like, what is lighting like on the site? Are the, because you have sites that have quite a bit of topography, so there's a lot of slope. How are we addressing accessibility? And that really was something that was fairly significant on both schools. And this was identified not just by us, but even in the prior reports. And I'm not sure, there were some items that were addressed, but overall, we need to really think about how to address the accessibility issues throughout the sites, both sites. So that was, that was one. We also looked at, you know, the circulation pattern of both the buses and the parent traffic. And how does that work and or not work, you know, the cross, the co-mingling of these graphic patterns. So we looked at that. We looked at adequacy of parking and, you know, for instance, at Center School, what we call their north lot, which is a gravel lot. So you've got parkings designated there, but there's, it's a gravel lot and there's no way for anybody as an accessible route from that parking lot to get to the school. There are steps, you know, gravel is not ideal for any kind of accessibility. So there's several challenges and even the entrance, the steps at the north side is, there's some, you know, a couple of steps. And when you get up there, you have to, you're once again having to go upstairs. So something like that, one could say, okay, we taped them up, we cleared it, ramped it up, somebody down there. Going up a couple of steps, you could very easily create a, put a ramp in there and do something like that. But then it ties in with something like security, which you really want people coming in from that side of the building. Because, you know, now you're dealing with security and, and depending on how you organize the building, whether that's a parent drop-off area where the students get dropped off and they come in. How does the school then manage the security aspect of it? Then if you look at the south lot where the buses come around, once again, how do the students ingress the building? And what is the accessible route to get, come to the, to the front entrance? All of those things are, are that site assessment. So that's what we looked at when we went through this, this evaluating for the site. The second major component is the building envelope. And we put that in second because it's so important to make sure that your buildings are tight when it comes to any kind of moisture getting into the building. And, you know, your buildings are old, so that means, you know, there are areas that there are cracks and faults. Some of them used to be replaced. And, you know, the windows are certainly a big issue and the windows come into play in many different ways. You know, windows, if they're old and there, there's air coming through them, air infiltration, then what happens is over time, that can, especially in, in our, in the summers, it gets sort of humid. And you start getting condensation, which then ends up leading to mold. So these are all things one needs to consider and that, you know, when we look at it and say, we should really make these buildings fairly tight. So the roof, the walls, the windows. And along with that is also the doors. So, you know, and the doors come from the back, but not only do they need to be tight, but they should also be able to, you know, again, be part of the security aspect of the building. There should be sensors on the doors if they're left open. All of that comes into play as we look at the building envelope. So that's a second component that we looked at. The third was the interior finishes. Now we're coming to an area where finishes are really carpeting. You know, all of the floor finishes, the wall finishes and, you know, ceiling tiles, everything that you can see. But in that, we also do include things like, what's the cabinetry look like? Some of this cabinetry is pretty old and it's really lived fast its useful life in terms of the material itself. So what does that look like and how does that then also look when it comes to accessibility? In terms of, you know, handicapped accessible areas, if you've got a sink, is that sink handicapped accessible? We have to look at all of those in terms of equity within, within the building, not, not that. So, and then we also look at, you know, natural light and, and acoustics. From the natural light perspective, you're pretty, you know, mostly in a very decent place. But we do have at all the cafeteria and some spaces that don't really have any natural light. And so that is something to consider. In fact, if you were to do a project that you're looking at funding from the state, superintendent will have to, you know, write this letter that says, yes, you've considered natural light and you're providing natural light to all instructional spaces in the building. And as part of the project. So that, that comes into play. And acoustics, you know, when you have unit ventilators, they're pretty noisy. And what happens is these standards are relatively new in terms of, you know, when these buildings were built. But a, the decibel level that you're supposed to maintain in an instructional space is fairly low. And so just your H V A C system itself, then it becomes a challenge as to how you design your H V A C system. And unit ventilators, especially older unit ventilators, just don't work as efficiently. We, we've looked at some newer ones and, you know, even they become a challenge. And so then, but there are many ways to address this, so that, that becomes another issue. So we look at those items in that interior finish sections. And I'm, I'm sort of abbreviating this because there's many more aspects to it in the report. The next, on the interior that we looked at was really accessibility, you know, things like other bathrooms accessible. And is there other necessary clearances there, appropriate fixtures in place? Is there appropriate signage there? Because it's not just signs to the room, but it's also wayfinding signage. So we have to consider all of those items. We have challenges with interior accessibility. For instance, Center School is not accessible in the interior of the building. You know, you live, somebody in a wheelchair that has to leave the building to come back in to get to that north section. And that's a fairly significant issue. And, and, you know, people, there are individuals that are out there that are saying this, you know, you, you need to have equity here and then they can, it's a law. So you could find yourself being sued, you know, and that's happened in some communities in Connecticut. So we've looked at that, even internally, you have some ramps and stairs. But there are things such as areas of refuge. Because the building is not sprinkled, you know, which is another major item, which we'll talk about a little bit later. You have certain requirements as a result of that, that you need to address within the building. And things like areas of refuge, but if you build in the sprinkler, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to worry about that. So there are trade-offs and when we do certain things that are correlated and that improve the building, you don't have to do other things in the, in the process. So those items are, we do consider throughout the building in both cases. I mean, accessibility, even in the entrance to that hall, you know, you have that grand staircase. And I wish when they put the ramp into the side, if they'd put it in and turned it so it came in right at the main entrance, which I'm not sure why that wasn't done, it would have solved that issue. But, you know, some interesting new regulations. Is there requirements and some officials, because these requirements end up being something that's controlled by the local, local officials. So it's authorities having jurisdictions with your local fire marshal and building inspector. We're just dealing with another community where we put in a ramp and a stair and a secure vest to be able. And when we did that, the local official said, no, I want this ramp covered. So it's, and it was quite an elevation change. So it's a long way to go to try and enclose that. So we ended up actually putting elevators in to, to, to create the space. There's also some new laws that the codes that have come in, where you have redundant lighting. So that if one fixture fuses, that this adequate redundant lighting to light that space. Unfortunately, these are not very clearly defined. So it's like, how do you decide where, you know, you, which ones and how often do you do this? So, but these are just things, new codes that have, that have come about and that some officials are enforcing. And, you know, some, some don't. But, you know, as an existing building, you can get away with some of the things. But when you start looking at improving your buildings, then you need to really consider all of these issues as we go along. You know, we looked at, when I say programmed spaces, and that's, that's really individual spaces within the building. And then the final, the next item was the building systems, which are your plumbing fixtures, your fire protection. Amongst can fire protection is a major issue here in terms of getting sprinklers in the building as your building is now required to be sprinkled. So that's something that one needs to do. H V A C controls, you know, if, if you look at, I mean, there, there are certain conditions, you can repair some of the equipment. But ultimately, when you look at it holistically, you need to replace the overall system that you have to, to an updated H V A C system. And in doing that, you're not going to try to match some existing piece of equipment that may still have five or six years of life. But doesn't really now work well with the rest of the system. It has to be a comprehensive solution. So, you know, that becomes a major issue. That also impacts your electrical and the electrical con, the distribution system, how the wiring goes. And then also the loads that are now needed. So some, you know, so we have to look at potential upgrade of the service in some cases, a switch here. But these are all items that the engineers have looked at. You know, the security, building security, you, you know, you need a secure vestibule. One that, you know, you come in, it's, it's controlled, you then come through the main office before you are allowed into the school. And certainly both schools have the opportunity for that to be done. So that is something else that we're citing along with. One of the issues we have is teacher, the doors that are, I guess, there's a it does, they're not allowed to latch because in a teacher's, when they close the doors and locking themselves out or, you know, when the doors latch. So there is hardware for that. The, the problem is by having those little, what are they called, my magnetic strips that they've placed there, is because you're not a sprinkled building, you're always, and your doors have to be fire rated. And by doing that, you're now violating that code, just like your fire code and that. So it makes sense from a convenience perspective. And it makes sense that, okay, if there's a security breach, the teachers can just pull that magnetic tab off and, and the door locks. But at the same time, when there's fire, that becomes a different type of an issue. So, you know, those are some of the things which are both building related and also security related. And that needs to be done. The other two items that we looked at is technology and structure. So the technology, you're pretty up to date and I'm sure over time you're going to keep staying up with your network and systems and your, the technologies throughout the building, the different types of displays and educational smart boards, making boards, whichever one, as you're moving through. And then structure, which is actually one good piece of news, your structure for the most part of these buildings is good. You know, so it's not that we're having to rip down and have major issues with, with, you know, structural support systems. I mean, there are some laws, there are some cracks in them, but these are all based on our engineers' report. Are all addressable and relatively minor in the scheme of things. So those are the eight items that we addressed. And what we did for this presentation is, is a, a site plan that identifies some of these issues. And one item that I didn't mention, you know, is when you have emergency vehicles, you need access around the building. You currently don't have access around the building. So that's something that would need to be addressed with the site. But the, the major concerns with, with the site really have to do with the overall circulation of the vehicular traffic onsite, the accessibility onsite. You do have to update your subject systems. You do have to update your storm systems and storm drainage and retention systems. So even on the site, there's a number of things that need to be done. And you also have to, you know, look at just the conditions of the asphalt within the sidewalks. So there's a number of items there as well that need to be addressed all throughout the site. There's sections that are in good shape, there's sections that have been repaired, but overall, you need to, you know, look at it holistically. And also from the perspective of when you, you know, for instance, at center, when the bus drops off the kids, how do they get to the main entrance? There's a, some can go up the stairs, others would have to go around. And so those types of issues, that's what you would need to be addressed. Let's speed it up a little bit. Here, you know, some of the, all the issues that we talked about are, I mentioned of Iran. These are just examples of where, you know, some of these are recurring. For instance, at the top of that diagram, there's a, there's a second, a lower level classroom at Center School that's, you know, under the accessible life stair. And that's just not a co-compliant condition. There's also concern about travel distances and area of refuge there for students even getting out of the building, especially if you're in a wheelchair. So that's, that's something we've identified. There's the, the wall between the cafeteria and, and the art room. And that was, I believe, sometime it must have been a folding partition that's been closed, it's been made into a permanent wall. Doesn't meet your acoustical requirements. It really needs to be torn down. And if it's going to stay as an art room and a cafeteria, then you need to have that as, and meet the acoustical requirements in that, for that wall. The kitchens in both schools are pretty tight. They're not meeting all your A D A appearances and even some of the equipment needs to be updated. You know, I know that they're doing a good job with the food program, but they're working with what they have. And the reality is you, you do need to update the, the equipment in there as well. You know, and the details of that would be really a function of what your food service program is all about. But the critical piece there is these, these kitchens are in, in board. And so part of the problem that you have is, you know, taking trash out and deliveries, all of that is coming through educational space, which doesn't, you know, so the students and the people coming in and out are, are co-mingling. And that's not the ideal situation. So that, that's something else we've looked at. Things such as the you know, the cabinetry and toilets being accessible, I mentioned those. So those are some of the items that we highlighted on, on Center School. So that led us to that, the next thing, which is a pretty sort of, you know, you look at this, make this, and I said, okay, should I even present it in this stack? Because it's just, you know, and, and we're breaking it up into smaller sections. But, you know, the, the discussion, discussion that we had about this is, you notice that we have like five priority levels that we've identified. We were, we're saying that priority one is really something you should address more immediately. And then priority two in like two to three years, then there's a priority three, then there's four and five. And unfortunately, most of the items that we're looking at, these are more effective, are code related, A D A related, conditions related. So, you know, if the H V A C system is not in good shape, that's health code and indoor air quality code. So most of them are falling within priorities one, two, and three. And then there are other items that we have in priority level four and five. But some of those are, you know, would be the appropriate things, you know, something like a canopy to protect students as they're coming in. You know, those are nice to have and they can be, you know, they're not required unless your local officials say, no, no, you have to provide it. And, and then there's items that we felt that are worth this in good condition, but need to be maintained. And we're, we're going out about ten years here on this evaluation. So either five, you know, or more, ten, ten-year items that you probably are going to need to upgrade your, you know, your technology, infrastructure or your peripherals. So those items fall into that ten-year window, although I think they would also add some numbers that, every year. But, but I'm thinking really that anything that had to do with A D A was, fell in the number one priority. If it had to do with the codes that are like life safety codes, they fell into the number one priority. Indoor air quality was another one, your mechanical systems. I mean, you, you really got a lot out of your systems and the systems that you do have and that they maintain and, you know. But it gets to a point where you really can't do much more with them or you're dealing on a crisis basis. And I think that's something you need to evaluate for the, you know, continue to operate. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this and saying, we're here talking about how to really rejuvenate these buildings. So you really want to keep these buildings. You're not looking to demolish them and move on. And if that's the perspective, then I think you need to really look at how do we really take these buildings? And what is it going to take to do this work? So that's the attempt here. The other thing, at the, at the bottom is there are some totals in terms of the priority list. These are numbers that we're seeing based on bids that are coming in or estimates that we're getting now, you know. And, and the project that we're getting estimates on, etc., are either bidding next June or, you know, in the later, latter part of, of the year. So these are pretty current numbers. The challenge with something like this is if you try to put a number piecemeal to an item and then you realize, well, it just can't be done without impacting other things. For instance, if you were to replace the windows, which you should do from an air quality perspective, from air infiltration, from an energy management perspective. from an energy management perspective, that's great, you do that. But your windows, more than likely, based on the age of the building, have PCB and a hand cough. So that ties in the PCB, it's also, but the unit ventilators are so it starts and you need to replace that. So it's a trickle down impact on other aspects of the building. Now, it just means that that first project that you do might need to be a little larger in terms of what the work needs to be. When you do an HVAC project, for instance, you're now impacting the ceilings in that space. And the ceilings have lights and the ceilings have fire, you know, devices for fire alarm systems. So you have to look at all of that. And if it's something that you could work with, and, you know, the fire alarm system has been upgraded, so that's great, that's good. But now the question is, are all the devices as up to date? And what's the impact going to be? The engineers believe that we can work with the existing fire alarm system. So it's a matter of now, how do we address some of the other work that needs to be done? So, you know, that's, that's why when you see those columns and the numbers, I looked at it and also there's an escalation factor. So column one, which is priority one, actually, there's a total column. That's if you did everything, you know, in one house. So that's the first total, since before priority one, that's second, right? That sort of thing, okay, take everything and do it at one time. Now, the reality is, we have to then look at what happens to the kids when you're doing this work.
Right.
That's a whole different discussion. Once we looked at, you know, what needs to be done, now we can look at where we put the kids. Is there room at another school? Or do we phase it? And when you do phase in, you maybe bring some horrible classrooms in, which, you know, all of that ends up costing a lot of money. But the impact on education when you're doing a project that has, that puts so many different aspects to it is going to be fairly significant. So I think part of whatever you do, an important part of it has to be, how do we phase it? And where do we put the kids when that work is being done? And it's not that it can't be done, we've done that in many instances. But the reality is, it takes a project and it trags it out because trying to minimize impact on education means you can only do so much work. When you have hazmat in a building, you can only do that when the kids are not in school. So, you know, you try to do some of that, or all of that in the summer months. So it becomes a fairly complex puzzle as we go through the process. So columns, the priority columns, one of the main differentiators there is also we're putting escalation in for each, each year. So each priority, if it says it's two years away, then there's a, you know, you're doubling that. So some of the costs, if you total up all priority one through five and you say, well, wait a minute, that doesn't add up to that, the first column, which has a total. And that's true, because the first one is based on doing it all now. And then the other five are based on latter, you know, later years and phasing it over the multiple years. So that's, that's what this spreadsheet is all about in terms of getting, getting a feel for where the numbers are. And every time I look at it, you know, it's like, okay, what if we did X, Y, and Z? Maybe we could save some money. So there are potential ways of trying to bring that number down. But at the end of the day, it's all going to depend on how much, you know, what are the most important things that you need to do? And so that's, you know, that's a discussion that would need to happen. So that when that priority is set, then we can really come to terms of what's the best and what's the anticipated cost in doing that.
Did you work in the inflated prices? In other words, you've already adjusted these numbers for two years out, three years out?
Yeah. So I think we use a 5% escalation factor in there. And just to give you an idea, from a year ago, prices have gone up, when we were looking at some estimates that came in in the past three months, we were wondering why these numbers so much higher? And one of the estimators told us is that in Connecticut, there was a 15% increase in labor. Not even so much the material, the labor, because, you know, there's so much going on in New York and Boston and that the workforce is, you know, people have been pulled all over the place. So just not able to find the manpower to do the work. And that's one of the drivers that was impacting the budgets.
So when I added up those two numbers, I came up with 57 million. Is that correct? Well, this is, and I'm thinking back to my building project where we were talking 61 for everything brand new. And all of the disruption, and we haven't factored in what it's going to cost to, you know, rent a school for the kids.
Right, the disruption factor not factored in there.
Right.
Neither is in, this is something that Rusty said to me over and over. And I, I hear loud and clear is that you're not impacting really the education in this as well. You're really just repairing your buildings, your infrastructure.
No furniture, no?
No, that's not part of this.
Okay, and all of that was built into our other number?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to go through, it's 638, so I'm just trying to make sure we get to. I mean, I, I think it's going to be, I can see from Jen, like, holy cow. That's where I was as well when I first got Hall's report. I think you get a sense of how to look at it. It's going to take some time for you to look at. Do you want to skip through Hall at this point in time and just jump to?
Everything that you just talked about, the same concept applies to Hall. Yeah, and many of the issues are the same, you know. In fact, because it's a bigger building, you know, it's got, and it's an older building, especially the original building. You've got issues with the plaster, you've got issues in terms of all the stairs that are all over the place. Accessible, you know, equity of accessibility throughout the building, even though there's an elevator there. That whole, you know, if you want to get from one place to, you know, on one floor to another space directly below, you have to go all the way, get the elevator, come all the way back. Or to get from the lowest level, you have to go through the gym to get to the elevator. These are all issues that are, you know, part of the day to day operations of the building. So should be, you know, considered. None of this addresses educational needs whatsoever.
I just have a, may I ask a question? So when you were doing the priorities, and I know that you made a reference to how you kind of broadly categorize them. Do you have, like, a definition includes anywhere in here as to how you categorize the stuff?
So I look at priority one is what I call life safety items. So if it's security, it's life safety. And life safety can include things, you know, how does the traffic pattern work on the site itself? Because if it creates a dangerous condition between bus and vehicle, other car traffic, then that's something that needs to be addressed. So that was security. And then the other thing was if it's hazmat. So unfortunately, everything I'm going down is falling into priority one because they're all major items that need to be addressed. The HVAC system provides in with energy, energy management and performance of buildings. You're losing a lot of money because your building systems are inefficient. So I put that into priority one because again, it's indoor air quality as well. And then ADA was the other one. So those items just automatically went into, into the priority one. Now, could some of the items of in the ADA come out? Yes, some might be, and we think we pulled a few out, but it's a judgment flaw.
Right, right. And as a board, like, it's our responsibility to make sure that if we are, you know, behind these priority one projects, that we really understand the impact of not doing them versus doing them. And is it, is it, are there any that you guys have identified that would lead to? Well, there's code violations, I'm assuming, I mean, you've already referenced that. And life safety, like kids evacuating or kids, like, there's these, there being some kind of catastrophic incident in the school
Right.
that these things would not address, or that these new fixes would address.
And that's how, like sprinkler in the building, you know, it's like, to me, it's just a base condition. A school with more kids in there, you need to sprinkle it and make it as safe as possible.
I agree with you.
I mean, it's hard for me to say, okay, as a design professional, if I were to say, oh yeah, don't do this and something were to happen, I wouldn't be able to live myself. So I have to be very conservative in the way I approach it because it's really for for who's in the building, for the inhabitants of the building, and they just happen to be all young kids. I mean, not that the teachers and my wife's a teacher, so she'd say, wait a minute, what about us? But but there are individual items that you could say, well, no, really, we don't want to do this, or we can postpone this to try to bring in, you know, like parking lots. But then you start thinking about, you know, if you don't, if you start paving one parking lot and don't do the other parking lot, now's the time to do it. When everybody's there mobilized, you're going to have the economy of scale. If you start piecemealing it, not only are you going to lose that economy of scale, you're also going to have the issue that later on, it's going to be more expensive. And then where do you draw that line about, you know, this side we're going to be fixing? And then, then when you get to the point of fixing the other side, oh, wait a minute, now there's going to be an overlap. So you're going to spend a little bit more. So these are all issues that one has to deal with.
Reimbursement. How, what percentage of this would be reimbursable or?
So I did not fill out the column reimbursement because that's going to be a function of how you pursue these projects. If you just pursue them as capital improvement projects, then you won't. But things, yeah, but things like a roof replacement, you could pursue that as a standalone project. And that's where on this slide, I think there's a priority and non-priority, yeah. So what that means is a priority project are the bigger projects, like the project that you were trying to do with one school. Non-priority projects are things like, you know, right now they have HVAC, they have roofs, they have window replacements. So there's certain, there's a code update. And so there are certain types of projects that you can do that are non-priority projects. And that depending on what your approach to it is, they'll be eligible for reimbursement. But the states also, you know, looking at things and saying, there's some things that can be standalone, but there are others that if you're doing a little bit, but not touching the rest of it, doesn't make any sense. We're not going to, you know, pay you, you know, to do just a little bit of it. And then later on, you're going to come back and we're going to do more. And then expect us to provide that reimbursement. So you do have a fairly robust reimbursement, it's 60, 63% or so. So, you know, that's, that's pretty good for, you know. I mean, some of the cities have much a higher rate, but, you know, for a rural community to have that is fairly reasonable. So we can develop that, but again, it'll be, the more you can put together in a larger project. Let's say, we figured out how to, where to put the kids and wrote that all out in terms of phasing and, you know, how are we going to develop swing space for the students? And you were to take one school and do it all at one time. You would do at that point, it's called renovate as new project. And then, then you would get full reimbursement, which is your 60 something percent for everything that you do. So even, you know, the state has a lot of items that they call ineligible. So even though they say, oh, this project is eligible, there's the nuances of what's not eligible. And in essence, the way they look at it is they say any of the Rs, repair, replace. So if it's existing, you know, and you're repurposing, you know, those become ineligible. Now this, you know, you can finesse the language to try to get around that, but there's something that is very basic and clear. So if you say you have a 60% reimbursement rate, let's say, you go through this list of items that they call ineligible, and then you have to go through that. And by the time you take those out, your net impact is not 60%, something lower than that. So, but when you do a renovate as new project, it's, none of that comes into play. You're just allowed to do this as a light new project.
Thank you.
And, you know, on the left of this particular slide, you can see there's a list of different types of projects. So there's a decent amount of projects in there that one can choose to do as a non-priority project. But, you know, they used to say, okay, we can do security as a non-priority project. And some communities have done that, but now they're changing their attitude towards security as well. So they want you to bundle and do as much as possible.
If we chose to do a renovate as new project, you have to do both buildings at the same time? Or can you do them individually?
Can do them individually.
Okay.
Because I would imagine that you would try to use the buildings to sort of create some swing space. Although you're pretty
This is the piece for me that was kind of a little bit of the eye opener. Because we've been talking about the roofs and the HVAC grant, right? So when Rusty and I, Rusty and I started talking about priorities and like, what has the town been talking about? We know they've been talking about roofs for sure on priority here. And then we know the HVAC grant is another conversation supposed to be due in December. It's probably going to be the end of it, we believe. And this is where it went from my discussion with Rusty saying HVAC and roofs went to, okay, now you need to think about fire protection. You need to think about electrical. I mean, just the list when?
Ceilings, and I didn't include the windows in there. But quite frankly, with me, I would, because you're really, at this point, you're addressing your building envelope. You're addressing your HVAC system, which is so that you're not going to meet the high performance building standard. So you're going to be, you know, in terms of sustainability, that's going to be positive. But then you're going to leave the windows alone, so you're minus, right? You know, that's where you're going to lose all your energy. So, and they're all in some, you know, they're not falling down, but there's some that will not close. And there's some that are literally shut, you know. So the windows would be something that you might want to add to this list. Not kind of scare anybody.
We wanted those realities.
But wasn't there something about the windows that they'll pay for the
Yes.
glass, but they won't pay for the person to install it?
Yeah.
Reimbursed.
Right, right, and that's how, that's how those non-priority projects are. So you're going to be very careful where it says, oh yeah, good paper.
Yeah, and if you build a new building, they'll put all the windows down and never ask a question about reimbursement, you know.
So your example here, that, and this is the Center School number, it doesn't include solar. And that's something that we've also been talking about was, do you do solar? And you did not include that in this.
Solar, it didn't include solar and it didn't include the windows. So I think you try to conclude everything else. You know, there's always going to be, even with that limited scope, there's always going to be impact on, on other aspects of the building. Because the goal would be to come in and, you know, really put a new system in that doesn't emulate what's there. Rather, that's the most efficient for this type of building. And when you do that, it may have other impacts throughout the building in terms of how are you running the piping? How are you running your ductwork and so on? So, you know, there are some other impacts. And I believe I tried to capture some of that. And I also, at this point, I mean, again, you want to address some heavier contingencies. Because, you know, until you get to that next level where you've really evaluated the building to a degree where you know what system you're putting in, and therefore, what's the impact specifically on the building? Then you can come back and say, okay, that's how we're addressing the building and tighten the budget up a little bit.
Now, if we were going to
Now, if we were going to, I don't know, um, bond to do a renovate as new, but we're doing one school at a time, is there any issue with that?
No.
Okay, I didn't know if with the bond, I'm there like, no, you have to do, there's not, no.
You have a two-year window, but you can, and you know, in terms of when the building has to be shovel-ready. But when you're doing multiple school projects, you get that, that window, that's, you can defer that. And you can write that into your, into your approach to it.
So you can see when, I, I guess my point was, when you start looking at, uh, when we, we were saying HVAC and we're going to buy for an HVAC grant, or the roof, and the windows are probably not real accessible in the grand scheme of the big picture here. We're not talking about a lot of additional money, but it, it could be added. You're in eleven million, that cost the town, we were talking about bonding twelve million. That's, that was the CIP conversation, just so people know, that was the number that I think they have in year two of the CIP plan. That's the whole school number. Like, it's eleven million. So if you add the eleven million for Hall, and again, that's cost of town, and you add the six million, that's really what you're looking at to do HVAC, roof. All of the items, sprinklers, that's, but not, there's no solar.
No solar and no windows, and we can put that together, if that's, you know.
Was the grant money solar or is it?
If you do it at the same time as the roof.
It's the roof.
Yes.
That's what we were looking at.
Which is why you would want to make sure was, you're going to get value out of it.
And someone, I'm, I'm just going to not pretend to be smart anymore. So this, this, that we're talking about these little, these flyers that we have in front of us. Um, this is, oh, if I run the first page, that would be helpful. So it's HVAC and roofs, or does HVAC?
HVAC, roofs, sprinkler in the building. So those three major components are in there. Plus replacing the ceiling tiles, because they're going to be impacted anyway.
As, as standalone projects, like this would be one encompassed one project?
And this right here, all of what he passed in the text, all of this, if I understand it right, all of this is what is encompassed in his bottom-line number here.
Okay.
So when we talked about, our conversation was, okay, so what would the first approach be? I think that's what people have been looking for. If you were going to go in and do a good project, and you're going to do HVAC, and you're going to do roofs, what else has to come along with it? He's now said, you also need to do the sprinklers, you really need to do, make sure you do the electrical. And that's kind of phase one. It is not all the entire list, it's just these things that runs.
And ideally, the windows.
I would certainly, I certainly recommend that. Now, the, the, the key thing here is, you're certainly addressing the building, but you're not addressing the site in any way. So that's, that's all separate discussion.
So it's six fifty-five. You're still in, seated under your chair, which is good. Um, I think you probably ought to think about next steps, and, and I'd like to hear from you, Rusty, too, about thinking about next steps. You need to walk away and look at this. Um, you can ask me questions if you want to filter questions through me. If I don't know the answer, I can get them from Rusty. There's a lot of material there, it is still in draft form. At this point, we really don't have a phase two. Um, it's really the first phase that you see there, that what, what was just presented. He has phase two in my ear, but it's not bundled together by priority. I will be honest and say, I really helped build the priority, just based upon the feedback we've heard and what you see there. And he said, okay, if you're going to do HVAC and you're going to do this, you got to do this, this, and this as well. So you need to be thoughtful about that as well as, would, would you adjust, um, something, and then maybe those questions are important for Rusty, because if you say, well, I really want this done, he's going to say, okay, if you do that project, you also need to think about X, Y, and Z as well.
In fact, as you were speaking, that, that I, I think, maybe the secure, the secure vestibules should also be part of that. And because there's a number of things that happen, and this is, this is one of those cases where, you know, you start thinking about all the, the impact. And when you start creating different vestibules and, and, and you, you now start thinking about the communication systems in there and the, and how do you, uh, you know, treat that space for ventilation, air conditioning and heating? So those components impact the, the reconfiguration within the building too. So anything that has a, uh, an impact on reconfiguration, which then impacts HVAC, should be, um, you know, part of the, probably consideration.
So your thought for, you need to digest some of this, I think it would be helpful to come back for a conversation. May or may not include you in the next round, just for the board, just to talk, um, and maybe form some questions. We can, you can figure that out. Any thoughts for you to, you, you had mentioned at the beginning, maybe coming back, and we're still in draft form. What's the next step? Do, do you see?
We just wanted to, again, go over the existing conditions and maybe have a conversation here at the SOVIS to, to say, missing something.
Yep.
You know, because I don't want, or we added something in there that really has been addressed in some fashion, and then look at what that, that approach was. So just to sort of, you know, make sure we're, they're buttoning it all up. From an existing condition perspective, we're pretty much not be there, I'm sure.
We've talked about facilities, and you mentioned that we've not looked at the educational component at all. Is it possible for, um, Rusty to take the data that we have from the building project and see how we could address the educational piece of it? Or I guess that starts with Phil.
I, I think part of that is also determining, when you start talking about educational spaces, are, are you going to adjust? Right, so if you are going to, if you look at four classrooms and said, boy, we really could adjust these classrooms, this is what we would do. And he would need that information, and tell me if I'm wrong, to know what we'd be looking at.
I think we would, we need to come up with a, a program that makes sense in terms of how you give the education program. And then if you're going through that step, those, that process, you know, how would that tie into making these schools future-ready?
Right, and before you start replacing ceilings, do you want to talk about what are the rooms going to look?
Well, don't forget, you're, you're seventeen million, I think, in, and you haven't done anything with ADA. I mean, I'm just, I, I, my first thought goes to educational spaces too. But when we start talking about repairs, and what he just put in front of you, that, that's one section. Seventeen million dollars doesn't touch the educational pieces, but more importantly, it doesn't do anything with ADA. And that's a big piece that has to be addressed as well. So that might be something that we consider, if we were going to show a phase two, in my opinion. I'm going to recommend, hey, okay, so if your first bond is for X amount of dollars, seventeen million, because there's your number, your next bond would, should be addressing those things. Or do you do a bigger bond, and what could you address in a bigger bond in the first phase that did include? Uh, and that's where you all need to decide and say, what would we want to push for as a board? Do you want to see in that first project, do you want to see some of that, um, ADA stuff in this, in the first phase? So.
I think the EdSpecs that are, um, asked for put together would be helpful for our current members, especially our main people, because that is a piece of it. I mean, this is a building of buildings, but they're, as you said, for our youngest citizens. So the programming is pretty important, right? I mean, you can have a building, but, um, you kind of learn that COVID, when everybody learned from home, with their teachers on screens and so on. But, um, can't, because we have some new members, can we send out those?
Yeah, and maybe that's where something we can do as a board. We need, um, I can, I can review those, and then you and I could have a conversation, and you guys have seen those. Just they can peek at what, is there anything in there that we should consider?
Right, for sure, I think that's probably.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and especially Hall would look very different, you know, if we consider.
Depending on what you did.
Out of money.
Always. Yeah, and it's a lot, good one, so.
Okay, so we're going to look everything over, ask questions.
Yeah, if you can send any questions to me, don't worry about spelling type postings like that right now. We're still in draft form, the majority of stuff. We're really just looking at the content, like, hey, are the projects there, what questions do I have? Um, and then we can, we can talk.
Did you ask us also to consider adjusting priorities, or to think about what our own?
Yeah, if there's not, if, I mean, I gave you that first one with the roof and HVAC. Is there something that you would consider putting in there as well? And that, that's where I think it's, that would be good to have in your conversation. You don't need Rusty Mike to, to be here to have that conversation. What are your, here, you know, I went off of what I believe I've heard as town priorities.
Right.
You may have heard something different, and let's make sure that those are considered. So I think you need to, this is where you do need to have a separate meeting, again. After you review this, you go, okay, I don't see that in the phase one portion I would like, or I would pull this out. Does that make sense?
Thank you. What, what difficult work that was.
There's a lot of detail in here, and that's, that's what, you know, so you, as you keep rethinking it, and you look at this, and you're going, you consider this.
I'm glad that you all were with us during our school building committee, that definitely must have helped you to have some background knowledge and help us as well. So thank you, um, I definitely appreciate it both, and it'll be nice to work with you. It's a tough challenge, but we can do it.
Thank you very much.
Maybe don't, this, because we're in a separate, like, for the second meeting.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and adjourn at seven.
Maybe motion, the emotion.
Jen, on favor.